Afternoon. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It's June the 5th, 2007. It's 5:30 PM or shortly thereafter, and as we do all meetings, we'll start with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to, when the time comes, Mayor, I'd like to ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the US flag and the Texas flag. So right now, we have Camino del Cielo, Camino del Mundo. That's you?
(inaudible) Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful place that you've allowed us to live, and we thank you that your will can be done on earth as it is in heaven. We ask that all the participants in this meeting would be granted some godly wisdom and discernment in order to know how to better bring a little bit of heaven to earth. Lord, I pray that whatever decisions will be made today would be just and fair for the benefit of all those who live in this county. We thank you for your love, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor?
(inaudible) allegiance to the US, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, Texas honor and protection, Texas flag, Texas one, indivisible.
Thank you, Mayor. No one signed up for public comment, but someone wants to say something now? Let me just give the court a brief overview. Today, we had a mock hurricane slash evacuation drill. I thought it went well. We were able to recognize probably a couple of soft spots that we need to iron out, such as still trying to find a pet, and whether one can take a handgun, concealed handgun, on their bus, and things of that nature. But overall, I thought it went well. We were communicating at the state level and with Department of Public Safety in McAllen. As I was telling Commissioner Wood a few minutes ago, it's kind of hard to get people motivated and to get the adrenaline flowing when it's a mock event, but everyone did what they needed to do, and I thought overall, it went well. Mayor, I'm looking forward to working with you with this. I know that yours will be the first community to begin the evacuation process, and I'll have you know that you and I will make that decision jointly. As we will with all the communities, we'll make those decisions jointly, and I'm sure that we will both concur by the time that time comes. All right. Anything else? Okay. Presentation and our resolution items. We have a presentation by Commissioner Wood regarding the Good Neighbor Environmental Board. Commissioner?
Judge and Commissioners, Pete is passing out to you the 10th Annual Report that's made by a committee that is known as the Good Neighbor Environmental Board. Back in March of this year, I was appointed to this board, and I'd like to read to you the actual responsibilities of the board itself. The Good Neighbor Environmental Board is an independent US Presidential Advisory Committee that operates under the Federal Advisory Committee Act. Its mission is to advise the President and Congress of the United States on good neighbor environmental and infrastructure practices along the US border with Mexico. This 10th report, each year, each year, the board makes a report like this, and this is the 10th report, the 10th year that they've made a report, and they pick one to two, sometimes three topics to cover in this report. This particular report that was passed out to you now had two topics. One of them had to do with undocumented human crossings of the border, and the other one hazardous materials crossings. After the report was put together after a year of study and assembling information and everything, the recommendations at a glance on the undocumented human crossings was to address problems associated with unauthorized flows of human people across rural areas of the US-Mexico border, and also continue to protect the environment quality of the region. The Good Neighbor Environmental Board made two recommendations on that topic. One of them was to strengthen communications and collaboration between security agencies and environmental protection agencies, including land management agencies on both sides of the border. The other was to strategically employ a mix of technology and personnel to meet the security and environmental needs of different sections of the border region. In that portion of it, they also addressed the issue of the wall that we are all hearing about now, and what the federal government wants to build. In general, the wall was not an option that this particular board was recommending. The other topic having to do with hazardous materials crossing was to provide safety and security at ports of entry and beyond, as well as environmental protection from risk associated with the transborder flow of hazardous materials. On that topic, the board report also had two recommendations. The first one would be at ports of entry, increase the number of hazmat inspectors and establish specific sites and hours for hazmat vehicles. Beyond ports of entry, resolve liability issues for cross-border emergency responders and provide targeted support that reflects the needs of border communities within the larger national strategic plan. The booklet is bilingual. One side of it, one half of it is English, the other half is Spanish. And if you go toward the middle of it, you'll find the membership that makes up the board. Some have changed because this is last year's report. Myself and a couple other people were added to the board, and a couple were dropped off of the board for the 11th year. But we have representation on this board from several universities. University in San Diego State, New Mexico State University, a couple people from University of Arizona. These are mostly professors and doctorates that have a lot of interest in environmental issues. We also have federal members of this board, and I'll go through those real quick. And these are high-ranking, like deputy directors of these agencies, for example, the Department of Agriculture, Department of Commerce, US Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Housing and Urban Development, Department of the Interior, Department of State. We have the Department of Transportation, EPA Agency, IBWC, and we have one designated federal officer which kind of coordinates and keeps us all in tow and intact and on the subject, and she actually works under the purview of the Environmental Protection Agency. She's out of Washington. This coming report will be the 11th year, and the 11th year report, the subjects that we are going to be working on and creating a report for have to do with environmental impact and recovery from natural disasters such as hurricanes, floods, fires, earthquakes, and tornadoes. We seem to have more of these types of things along the border than we used to. We, you know, last night, had some tornado watches in Starr County. That's not a normal thing. We've had tornadoes in Eagle Pass a few weeks ago. Not a normal thing for us, but we're going to be looking at those issues. The next meeting, the board meets three times a year. Once in Washington, and then two times in other parts along the border. Last year, they chose Brownsville, which I wasn't aware of when I was appointed to the board, but it gave me lots of extra things to do to prepare for this meeting in Brownsville, which will be held on July the 24th and 25th. Judge, you'll receive an official invitation to do a welcoming on the 24th. I hope that your schedule will permit you to do that. The meetings are open to the public, and we welcome the public to attend the meetings, and I'll be glad to provide anyone additional information if they're interested in the meetings. On the 24th, we will have speakers from Mexico, from federal agencies, from state agencies, and some local agencies, having to do with the topics that we've chose to report on this year. And then on the 25th, it'll be more of a business meeting where we take care of where we're at in getting our report put together. I appreciate the time you've allotted me to present this to you.
Is it a two-day deal?
Two-day deal. They'll be arriving, actually, a lot of them on the 23rd, and we do have a field trip planned on the 23rd for those who arrive early. We're going to be looking at the levy and looking at the desal plan at the port and the one on 511.
(inaudible)
Make a trip to Bahia Grande.
Well, we will be approaching that, and I will be on the bus talking about it. And you're certainly invited to join us and talk about it. We'll have a reception also on the 23rd and then the 24th, and everyone's invited to attend that. And I'll let you know more about it as it comes up. Thank you.
Any questions?
John, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, we just got them, so maybe it's here somewhere. I see that it's a 10th report already. Is there some place here where it says what has been accomplished besides having meetings and bringing in?
There have been nine other reports, yes, and each of those have been on a specific topic, and as I say, they go to Congress and the President. And there are some reports on some of the issues that they've brought up in the past and that have actually been enacted. Part of this report is being used extremely closely by FEMA, for example, of the problems that after Hurricane Katrina and all...
Oh, I see. So it's disseminated for information for whatever agency or whomever can use it?
Yes.
Because I see where you have challenges and next steps. So somewhere, at some point, we find out if those next steps were taken?
Yes, ma'am. Sure do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's marked on the calendar, the 23rd, 24th, and 25th, and whatever we can do to assist you, just let us know.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to...
Well, here, motion by Commissioner Tamayo to acknowledge Commissioner Wood's presentation. Second by Commissioner Gasa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item three, presentation by the town of South Padre Island regarding the proposed annexation of designated area of county property south of the town of South Padre Island.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for allowing me to have this on the agenda. This is, we had a packet hopefully delivered to each Commissioner, and in the packet, it had a letter, the original letter, from the interested businesses. Today, I have Dave Friedman from Sea Ranch Restaurant, who's here representing the larger of the concessionaires in case anyone has any questions concerning what the town would like to do. Also in the packet, it had a copy of the ordinance that we passed making the accommodations for this district. We called it the Zone D2, and in it were, you know, everything allowed the concessionaires to remain as the county lease is written, i.e. height regulations shall be that as provided by the concession lease agreement, use regulations, any use that the governmental entity may legally make of the property, and any use permitted by the governmental entity to third parties pursuant to your concession lease agreement, area of regulations, again, shall be as provided as within the concession lease agreement, parking shall be as the agreement allows, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, all the concessionaires would be grandfathered under this voluntary annexation. It is within our E T J, and it would allow the businesses to come under the advertising umbrella, if you will, the Convention Visitors Bureau. From a legal standpoint, they'd be able to participate in co-op advertising. They'd be mentioned in the promotional tape or disc that is sent out by the C V B. It would be in all of the material the town puts out. Right now, it isn't because technically, it's not within the town limits. Also in your packet was sent a copy of the survey that was done of the areas that the Commissioners' Court agreed to do back, I think it was back in October of '06, or thereabout, sometime in the fall, I believe, is, may have been a little bit before that, I'm not quite sure. But it was voted on, agreed on, to spend the money, to do the survey, to get all this on a legal document as far as what was going to be taken in. And what had been discussed at that time were the areas that were already developed. Undeveloped areas were not included. This did present some problems, being able to connect up the properties as they have, they've got to be adjoining when you're doing the annexation. So it presented a little bit of a problem, but I think we were able to do it. Also here is Dewey Cashwell, the city manager, in case you have any comments by him or for him. I really do think that this is a win-win for the businesses, for the island. It doesn't affect the status of the county. It doesn't affect any of your rights, as I understand it. And, you know, I would really like to see the Commissioners' Court allow us to do this so that we can bring these businesses in and include them in, and for the town to receive the sales tax. I mean, there's no secret as to why the town wants to do this. And, you know, we feel these businesses are in business because of the tourist business that the island draws, and obviously, we'd like to get our share of sales tax and whatever, the liquor tax, and et cetera, that is generated. But it certainly doesn't go without awarding those businesses because they come into our fold. Dave, did you want to make any comments concerning this? I mean, I know that you've been asking about it, and I, you know, want to make sure that the Commissioners' Court understands that the businesses do want this.
I would just say briefly that the major concessionaires seem to be agreeable on this in...
Dave, would you mind, just so, because the audio won't pick up if you're...
Okay.
Thank you.
We've had a meeting with the major concessionaires, and we would like to, we feel that it would be advantageous for us to be within the city, the C V B, and part of the overall picture. We're getting some, right now, we don't contribute as far as sales tax goes. We're not in it, even though we do a great deal of advertising. I don't see any downside to it, and this would amount to sales tax as near as I can calculate, about, probably on about $20 million worth of sales, it looks like. That's really about all I have.
Just, and I just have one thought. When you mentioned the win-win-win for everybody, can you tell me what those win-win-wins are? And Mr. Friedman said that there was no downside to the county, and I don't know if there is or there isn't, but why would the county, because this has been on the agenda before, and it kind of got nixed, but why would the county not want to do this, I guess, from y'all's perspective? And I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'm not sure, because I've never really heard, you know, of all of our discussions, I've never really heard a reason why they wouldn't want to do it, so I can't answer that. I just know that for whatever reason, there's been a reluctance to do it. It's a win-win, in my opinion. Number one, selfishly, the town gets sales tax. The businesses get taken in, get brought into the fold and get included in with the actual Advertising Convention Visitors Bureau does. It gets into the distribution system of the information that we send out through our visitor's center. It becomes part of the town.
So right now, Mayor, when y'all do your advertising, you do not include anything for Schlitterbaum, or the Sea Ranch, or anything else like that? They're pretty much on their own with their billboards and all that, so...
Yeah, legally, we can't, because they're not contributing to the community or to the town in any form. And so, I mean, we know they're there, and I'm sure that the businesses say, when they're booking a reservation, well, you know, you've got, you know, good restaurants, Sea Ranch Restaurant, or you've got Schlitterbaum, and so on and so forth, but they're not in the visitor's guidebook. They're not, they're not part of the, truly part of the community. And so, and it's not fair to them, and it's not really fair to the town. The county doesn't lose, to my knowledge, because it retains its lease agreements. It has full control on that. We have no control over that at all. Any construction that you do is on land that is not part of the town. In other words, you construct it, once it's constructed, the thought was it would be then brought into, annexed into the town once it was constructed. So I don't really know, no one's ever been able to tell me what the downside was. We would take over full control of police, fire, as right now, we've got an agreement. I think you'd pay us, if I, isn't that correct? There's a fire services contract. That wouldn't be paid anymore.
How much is that?
(inaudible)
It's a cost per call, though, isn't it?
Or is it...
Yes, sir. I would say that varies anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000 a year at the minimum.
Is that as money that's directly paid to the island, or do we pay it to someone else?
Yes, sir.
That's paid directly to us, then the fire services contract.
So that wouldn't be paid.
Yeah, but I guess they're telling me that that's the E S D, Emergency Services District.
Right, right.
But if we did this, would that, would we be able to knock off $25,000 to $50,000 off the payment that we're making to the E S D?
Whatever that payment is.
Whatever that payment is, yes, sir.
I'm not sure on what that payment is.
Just comes off.
But E S D taxes would fall off of the people who are taxed through the E S D district right now, so, which is only 10 cents a hundred.
Yeah, so then, really, who ultimately does get hurt here, I think, is the consumer.
Pardon me?
The consumer.
Yes.
Because, right, because, I mean, because they, you know, you're going to add eight and a quarter, I guess, percent, or what is it?
No, we don't add eight and a quarter, do we?
Is it eight and a half or six and a half?
No, you add...
Two percent.
Two.
Two percent.
Six, they don't, yeah.
Oh, so, okay, so you had to, okay, all right, all right, all right.
So...
It's two percent.
You know, I don't see where it truly hurts anyone. I don't know that anyone goes hardly anywhere as a tourist and doesn't pay the eight or something percent. And so, I'm not so sure that that's going to be an impact that's going to be felt by anyone in that area, number one. And number two, I still don't see what the negatives would be to the county. The businesses are grandfathered completely on their signs and everything.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
And, you know, I, in the past, have not supported the annexation, because the Zone D2 has been passed by your council.
Correct.
Can, at any time, from here on after, if we would agree to be annexed, change by majority vote of your council? I mean, all it would take...
I don't, I don't think, well, I don't...
You know, legal, when we talked about this, legal advised us that at any time, it could be placed on your agenda, and the majority of your council could change that to be whatever your council would want it to be, because we have agreed to allow us to be taken in.
Well, I'm not sure that any board, including Commissioners' Court, can be held to any future ordinance, or...
Right, you can't.
And so, no, I can't guarantee that it won't be changed, but...
That's the downside that I...
But I guess...
Well, explain the downside more. I mean, what would, what would happen, let's use Commissioner Gasa's worst-case scenario. What would happen on a worst case?
Well, worst-case scenario, I guess, you know, the majority of the board could come in and say, "We think the county, you know, needs to come under our sign ordinance, and, you know, so we're gonna, we're not going to grandfather them." I don't know if we can grandfather them, okay?
But why would it...
I know you can't hold future boards...
Well, I know that they've had a sign issue over there now that's been in the news for about a month or two.
Yeah, but that would be really between the concessionaires and the city. I mean, it really wouldn't have anything to do with us.
We have signage.
Well, right now, we do.
We have signage. Oh, look, the county has, there's buildings built on county property that are not up to the standards of your building code in the town of South Padre.
Metal buildings.
I mean, that's...
Yeah.
Gentlemen and ladies, the county operates under the same building code that the town does, and so we wouldn't be imposing any building code that doesn't exist already. As far as grandfathering, in all likelihood, if anything were to change, it would be that any future development, any new development within this existing area might come under a different rule if they saw fit to change that zone. But rarely are zones in municipalities changed to that extent. The signage is not an issue, because we're taking them in as they are. I doubt seriously that anybody would want to make a change in the signage, but in the case of our own zoning, signs that are up are grandfathered. Unless they're an off-premise sign, the signs that are up on existing businesses where they are are grandfathered indefinitely, unless the business is destroyed by more than 50 percent, in which case, when they rebuild, they have to rebuild to the new standard.
To the new standard.
I would also add that you have the ability to consistently count on the law enforcement and the fire services unequivocally. There's never a question in these new areas as to who would be serving those areas and responding on first responder basis for emergency medical care, as well as police and fire services.
You know, I really don't have a big problem with this. I mean, I know the signage is an issue, but, you know, we've got to comply with other municipalities where we have our county buildings with signage requirements and things of that nature. I mean, I don't, I'm trying to figure, why would we not want to do it? I mean, unless there's other things out there I'm not aware of, but if it's a signage, okay, you know, we can talk about the signage. I mean, what else is out there?
I have not heard anyone make a comment about this district for one particular reason. It's out there on its own. It's not really contiguous, so to speak, to any other businesses. You've got a, you have a separation there. You know, you've got the K O A to begin with, and then you've got some, you know, you've got the separation between the counties. There's no construction to speak of to make it contiguous to the other construction within the town, so to speak. So it's kind, and it's a unique area. You know, it's boats, it's charter boats, it's a, you know, it's a restaurant, it's a theme park. So it's a, it's kind of a district on its own that's really not allowed or can be had anywhere else on the island, you know, as the island stands right now. So I couldn't foresee a board coming in and suddenly wanting to make changes unless the place was destroyed by a hurricane and you were starting from scratch. This might be different. But they still have to deal with your county leases. It's not our property. And, and I, you know, I think that the county leases would probably take precedence in some form. But I, you know, those are legal issues, but, and I guess you can go what-ifs. I think what we're talking about right now is what's good for the businesses now and how to move forward on this. You know, we've been talking about this, and I know there's been, you know, a lot of thoughts on it, but this is something that we've been talking about since about 2004, three, four years at least.
Is the convention center inside the city limits?
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
So it extends to the center, right, right next to it, right?
You mean the city?
Yes.
The city goes past, now includes the shores, which is further on out.
On both sides of the highway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't sure where you were at over there.
Yeah. So, you know, I would, I would really like, and obviously, because the summer's here, the sooner the better, but I would really like for you to consider approving this so that we could move forward, they could come into the fold, and, you know, I just can't see anyone making dramatic changes over there. No one even really...
Well, there's, this is not an action item today, and I purposely placed it this way to give you the opportunity to convey your thoughts and have everybody else come in and give their thoughts. I will be putting it on as an action item at the next meeting. It gives everybody the opportunity to digest it. If they have more questions, they can call you, or Dewey, or whomever. I mean, you know, we've been talking about the spirit of cooperation and trying to get together. We want to help you with your beach re-nourishment. We want to do a lot of things together, unless somebody else has some other comments or questions. But it will be on at the next meeting and just see where it goes.
Well, and I'd really appreciate that. And if anyone wants to talk about it further, needs, you know, any question answered, it would be nice if we could get it, you know, between now and then, so we can, you know...
I did have a question about the survey. In looking at it, there appeared to be a couple, what I'll call donut holes. There was save and accept, a couple of spots there. I'm not really sure what's inside those areas. And then, a couple small areas that apparently are state-owned land, and I guess my question is, do you have to have permission from the state to ask you to, like, we need to ask you to annex it?
Correct.
Do you have to have that same type of interaction with the state on those little small parcels that the state actually owns?
Yes. But I figured I'd start with the county first.
All right.
Mayor?
Yeah, and the save and except, exceptions were requested by the Commissioners' Court. These were some of the vacant areas that the agreement... These were some of the vacant areas, that the agreement was, was that we would not take those in until they were developed.
Mayor.
Yes.
I know that I had met with you shortly after the first of the year. And, um, I know that this was something that the past administration had started. And I just wanna let you know that you have my support. And I think, uh, after your presentation tonight, and hopefully next week, we, this board can meet and come to a general consensus that, you know, that's the best thing for the city of South Padre Island. And hopefully, we can get past this and get you on the way to annexation.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner. And I, I wanna reiterate that I not only think it's good for the town, but I also think it's, it's good for the businesses. Any other questions? If not, uh, wanna thank you very much for allowing us to present it, and I'll be back next week.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge, uh, Mayor Figueroa's report, moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides? Any further discussion from any member of the court, or any member of the audience? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, thank you, Mary. Uh, consent items and travel items, are there any items, uh, that anyone wishes to take out and discuss separately? I would like to take out item ten, regarding the purchase of replacement batteries for the, uh, defibrillators.
And on fourteen C, the agenda item reads travel to Austin, but yet, on the description part, it's travel to McAllen. So, are we gonna do Austin or McAllen?
Probably Aust- Austin, right? Anybody here?
I don't know, Pete?
'Cause the brochure says Austin, but the caption reads McAllen.
Well, the brochure is probably right, it's probably Austin.
It's a typo, probably, yeah, okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna pull it out, or approve it subject to being, all right?
Just to clarify.
Okay. Any other items to pull? Do I hear a motion on consent items four through thirteen C, and travel fourteen A through C, with the exception of item ten?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? We like Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatz, to go into executive session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item fifteen A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issues with the international bridge system on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of the State's Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one-two. Item B, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Ruel Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez versus Cameron County, Texas, and others in their official capacity, Civil Action Number zero-five dash two-seven-eight, for discussion of settlement, and the district attorney's authority to continue representing Jesus Villanueva in his individual capacity pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point seven-one-one A and B. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible purchase of land in El Chito for expansion to existing community park pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcells Two and Three for right-of-way of the Dixieland Road Project pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Four for right-of-way for Dixieland Road Project pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Five for right-of-way for Dixieland Project pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Lastly, item G, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Sixteen for right-of-way for Dixieland Road Project pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to come out of executive session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding, uh, the bridge system. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge reported, mentioned, approved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Ruel Gonzalez and others. Do I hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
Bruce Hodges here for the county. Uh, the motion that the court needs to make is to, uh, continue representation of Mr. Villanueva via the district attorney's office and, uh, its, uh, staff over there, uh, because the court has found it in the interest of the county to continue to do so.
So moved.
That was moved by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible purchase of land in El Chito for expansion to existing community park. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge, reported Mr. Mendez?
So moved.
And instruct him to, uh, proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in the executive session. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcells Two and Three for right-of-way for Dixieland Road Project. Do I hear a motion to, do we have to identify the amounts? Okay, do you wanna go ahead and, I didn't write those down, did some-
Thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight for each parcel, so moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Four, do I hear a motion?
Move to accept fifty-seven eighty-eight, five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Five?
Move to accept donation.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz to accept the donation from the city of Harlingen, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item G, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel Sixteen, do I hear a motion?
Uh, to accept the thirteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatz, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Back on the consent item, I asked that one item be pulled out for discussion. Item ten, consideration action to authorize the purchase of replacement batteries, electrical codes, and components for sixty-four Medtronic automatic external defibr- defibrillators, AEDs, utilizing Medtronic Inc. as a sole source provider for the purchase price of twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. We, we found a funding source?
Yes, Judge, um, I was told by our budget officer that these, uh, monies for the, for this purchase will come from lab salaries.
What happened, uh, I don't know how the subject came up, but, uh, it came to, to our attention that, if y'all recall, the county purchased some defibrillators some years back. Um, we had a hard time tracking them all down, and then the ones that we did track down weren't working. Um, the batteries were dead, so we decided to get these back on. And I guess my, my question to someone is, how are we going to make sure that these defibrillators are maintained, and the people that are supposed to use them are trained, or have the ability to use them in the future?
Thank you, Judge. I've met with Mr. John Frisell, um, he's the trainer for the law enforcement officers for Cameron County, and he will, um, ensure that, uh, these, uh, batteries that are purchased, if approved by the, um, Commissioner's Court, that he will, um, get the batteries in, all the sixty-four defibrillators, he's identified where they all are. And, uh, he will recertify the users of these, uh, defibrillators at that time.
How often does one have to go through the recertification process?
Every two years, Judge.
Every two years? And does everybody on the court know where they're at? And if not, can you provide an inventory of where they're at, along with a, with a, um, listing of the folks that are trained to use them? And I think that every occupant, or every elected official, every appointed official should have that list, so they know who to go to in, in their building, should someone need that. I don't know if, um, if we know here, who'd be, I guess it'd be Mr. Frisell, but if you go over to the old courthouse, do we know who, where they're at, and who the trained people are in that building, should we need to use them?
Mr. Frisell has identified all the sixty-four defibrillators, he knows where they all are, and I will meet with him and make sure that, that everyone on the court has a list of where they are and who to contact.
Okay.
Is there one here at the Dancy Building?
Yes, sir, there is.
Now, the, the source of funding is lab salaries. Uh, what lab salaries are we talking about?
It'll be coming from, uh, various departments, and I had spoken with Mr. Sepulveda, uh, a few weeks back, uh, when this issue arose. Uh, and he said he was fine with that, since the court approved that lab salary policy and gave him that authority.
Yeah, it's a one-shot deal, but, I mean, it's something that we have to do. I mean, I mean, this, you know, we have to do it.
Yeah.
Do I hear, um, a motion to authorize the purchase?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz.
Second.
Do I have a second, by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item seventeen, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules?
Did we pull out fourteen C?
No, what do you mean? No, that was just a clarification.
No, that was just clarification.
They're going to Austin.
Not McAllen.
Just a typo.
A typo from McAllen, huh?
Judge and Commissioners, uh, there was only one, uh, budget amendment that was, uh, set up, setting up the, uh, the funding for the transfer to the Health Services District for the state tobacco reimbursement of the four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, that was already approved by the court. Uh, there's various salary schedules, uh, ones are in relation to the tax department, where the ones that the action on, that the court took lax week for the, uh, project that they have undertaken with, uh, for the collection of taxes for B I S D, uh, as part of the presentation that Mr. Iza Guirring made to the court. Uh, after that, there's various, uh, salary schedules in relation to building maintenance. Uh, in discussions with, uh, Mr. Ibarra, uh, there were some changes he wanted to make. And then I, um, asked him to actually clarify as to individuals, to place them in the budgets where they were actually working, uh, because they had been sending, uh, individuals that were paid out of, say, the, the courthouse budget to La Feria, and that individual was gonna be staying there, and the slot that was in that budget was less than what that individual was making. So, I asked him to go through all of them, and to actually place the individuals in the buildings that, where they're actually working. Uh, because when we're looking at the cost, uh, for the, to run the actual facilities, and when we ask for reimbursements based, specifically also to the, um, tobacco reimbursement, um, I need to know the exact cost of what it is to run those facilities. Uh, so if there's a slot there that says it's sixteen, and the person that's actually there is making twenty-two, it makes a difference into what we get reimbursed. So, a lot of, there's, there's a lot of transfers of slots between these departments, but it's placing the individuals in the actual buildings where they're actually working.
Do I hear a motion to approve, um-
Okay, but it's not only that, though, but it, there's increases in salaries, right?
There is, uh, a change.
'Cause I see changes in the, at least three of them. Where am I looking?
It's not affecting the overall budget.
There was, let me start at the beginning.
Yeah, come on.
Um, ten-five-fourteen, okay. Uh, the Dancy Building, the, the position, uh, slot number one, the first slot is actually being transferred from ten-five-fourteen, and then that slot that was there, the twenty-two thousand, is being transferred to the jail. Uh, on the slot number four, uh, which is there, is the slot is being transferred from the courthouse, uh, for the custodian that's actually working here, and that slot, which was less than that, is actually-
Increased, but-
Yeah, it's been increased.
The other one that's being transferred is decreased.
The one that's being transferred, yes, because that slot, that's what, that slot was vacant, and it actually pays less than what this individual was making. So, it's bringing, that's why these are being transferred back and forth, because the, the people in those slots were making more in the other depart, in the other department budget than this slot pays. So, we couldn't just transfer individuals, we actually had to be transferring slots, because if not, then they would be making less when they were being transferred to, say, this budget, as opposed to the other budget, because each facility has its own budget. Now, there were some changes that, uh, if you look at, um, ten-five-fourteen budget, there's a slot that's actually being, uh, transferred, it's been eliminated from ten-five-fourteen, because this, there's nothing coming back, this total slot, um, is going to the jail. That's the very one, slot number three, it's actually being zeroed out. Um, and then there was, the slot number ten, uh, is coming from, well, the slot that was there, which was the electrician, is being transferred to the jail, and the slot that's, uh, be, coming from there was at sixteen thousand, six forty, but that one is being, uh, it's a new slot here at nineteen four eighty-nine, and the fund, the difference from that is coming from another vacant slot that he had within this department, ten-five-fourteen. Um, let me go down the list here. Okay, slot number eighteen, that one is being transferred to the La Feria Building, uh-
And decreased.
And being, 'cause the slot that was coming from over there, uh, this is a prime example, the individual there was making twenty-two thousand, and he'd been with the county for, or has, is with the counties for various, uh, number of years. But the slot that was, uh, over in the La Feria Building was actually only a custodian position, and so, he's being transferred over there.
So, you're, you're taking one slot away from the fifty-one forty-
Right.
And putting it in the jail.
Over there, and bringing that one back, if, if there was one to bring back, there are a few-
Is there one to bring back?
No, uh, there's, there's two slots that actually, that aren't coming back, uh, where the individuals-
You know, 'cause, I mean, the, the individuals that are doing the custodial work are already kinda like overburdened in some of these areas.
Right, there was actually-
So, we're losing more?
One, two additional slots for individuals that are working in the downtown jails that were listed under the courthouse budget. Uh, so, on the, the M and O for the jails, uh, is gonna increase, because we're actually moving two slots, and there's nothing coming back. There're just actually more personnel or staff actually working in those facilities, and we need to track that. Um, excuse me, especially for the reimbursement rates.
I, I might be the only one that's used.
It is, I, I can get, send you a breakdown as to exactly that, where this lot goes, and this lot comes back, or if you want to wait another week, I can provide that to you, uh, and it shows you transfers from here to there.
Is, is the jail picking up some slots, and let's say, maintenance is losing some slots?
Um, no, no, it's actually the maintenance of the jail, uh, which is in the direction of Mr. Ibarra. Uh, and originally, there was-
Well, let me ask you, is anybody getting an increase because you're moving them around?
There, uh, there were some changes, uh, that Mr. Ibarra had requested. Uh, one in creation, I think, a new slot, uh, and then taking it from a vacant slot and increasing, uh, the new slot.
You know, like, I can understand-
And reducing the vacant, I'm sorry, reducing the vacancy slot.
Correct, reducing the vacant slot.
See, I can understand your forty-nine ninety, which is the, uh, tax assessor, I mean, it tells us exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I, I know there's a lot of changes on this, on this other one.
But the other one, I just see, like, you know-
Well, I, I can provide an, an actual listing that's not on the salary schedule, that'll, that'll have it, and then say, transferred to, you know, this other budget, or being transferred from this other account.
In other words, to clarify, to clarify-
Yeah, not showing the whole salary schedule, but just the slot, the only, the slots that are affected, and where they're going to, and where they're coming from.
Let me ask the question again. Is there anybody that is moving from one slot to another, where they're, where they're getting a raise by, by shifting them from one slot to another?
Yes.
Okay, and why is it that we're doing that?
Uh, these were discussions that, uh, Mr. Ibarra had with, uh, Mr. Sepulveda, and, uh, the salary schedules were presented to me for consideration, in conjunction with that.
You know, we do that, if there's, uh, you know, additional duties, you know-
With vacant slots, yeah.
Whatever. Now, the vacant slot where you're taking money from, uh, are you gonna have a hard time finding somebody to fill that slot? Because it's, it's below X amount of dollars, or what?
No slots were reduced below the county's, uh, minimum of eight dollars an hour. And I think they, uh, starting for the basic custodial slots were at eight dollars an hour.
I mean, I can see, like, again, I go back to the previous, uh, changes. We had some added responsibilities to certain jobs because of the new contract that came in, and I can see the justification there, but I'd like to see some kind of backup on the others, or some kind of disca, I mean, some-
Yeah.
So, I make motion that we table this item, and that it be brought up to-
Well, let's, well, hold on, hold on, hold on, why don't we do this? Um, why don't we approve the, the salary schedules that are, that we can understand? Which is the, uh, the tax assessor collector salary schedules, those are pretty clear. Those are pretty clear. Let's go ahead and table, let me hear a motion to, to do that, and then have a motion to table the salary schedules related to, to, to building maintenance, and hopefully give us a week, and I guess, give us something that we can follow it through, okay? Was that, is that your mo, that bill?
Well, let's just be put into one motion. Approve everything except what we have been discussing and need clarification on.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Tamayo to approve the budget amendment and the salary schedules related to the tax assessor collector, and, and table the salary schedules related to building maintenance until Javier provides a clarification as to what he's doing.
And that you bring that back.
And you bring that back next week. As a move by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gataza, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item carries. Approval of minutes, April the seventeenth, two thousand and seven.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gataza, do I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item nineteen, approval of county claims. We have county claims, Mark has presented some additional county claims. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gataza, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty, consideration...
I'd like to show that I, that I abstained on check number zero-oh-one-eight-two-two-four-seven.
Okay, any further abstentions? I don't think I have anything. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please no Commissioner Tamayo's abstention on that warrant. Item twenty, consideration authorization to finalize the creation and implementation of a warrant officer program after having had the funds certified by the auditor as requested at the previous hearing, in which approval for implementation was passed.
Do we need a presentation, or can we just...
Well, let's see what they have to say.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve item twenty. Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
I'd just like to say that I think this is something that is going to show that we truly need this, and, and if you will report back to us to show us the progress, to show that it's, and, and one of the reasons that I think we really need this is, not only that I think we'll be having money coming in, but most importantly, so people will realize that they're, you're going after them. And I think that's the main focus.
Well, I think the commitment to make the program cost-effective is a commitment that I can, you know, appreciate from you guys. When you say that you're going to see what happens between now and the end of the year, if it doesn't pan out, you know...
We want to scrap, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. We all came as a unit, this is my committing, except Judge Gataza couldn't make...
And a fine-looking committee it is.
And we made a commitment, we all signed it, we gave you a copy of it, and we're, we're standing by it, hopefully now we can get our people working, so we can get our offices going, and we are approving for, for officers, right?
Whatever the budget allows.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do Mark, approve Mark's certificate?
What Mark had, had certified for.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
I just want to thank you all, and I think Commissioner Tamayo is absolutely correct. I think the county will see a real quick return on, in this investment, I really do, I don't see where we cannot. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I would also like to thank the county judge and the commissioners for going ahead and authorizing us to go ahead with this program. We've been after it for quite a long time, and I believe that this program is going to work for everybody. One, for sure, that it's going to bring in money for the county, the other one that's going to relieve our courts of all the paperwork that has been stacking up for years, and years, and years. Thank you very much.
Judge, I will, I will be asking you that, when you start putting your, your budget together for the coming fiscal year, you know, you're going to do it by, by JP, right? So it may be, it may happen where we may scrap one JP and add another one, or whatever it is, so it's going, really, it's a performance measure, right? And you all know that.
That is correct. Basically, we had down, made up a list, and of course, the first thing is the accountability of what these officers are doing out there, and the work, the locations, and the sections, the mail lots are going to do, phone calls, knocks, and then, of course, the last one is your pickups. We're going to be making a list of the warrants that we'll be working with, and we'll be making a list and adding to these actions that we are going to follow up. Each list will be checked up to date on a daily basis by these judges, and the list is to be provided to each judge at the end of the month with monthly report with totals to everyone.
Thank you.
A list of the addresses that we'll be making, the contact will also be kept also with the office staff, and no contact will be made on these, if they're not on the list, like, in other words, they won't just be picking up any warrant, be doing it, the ones that we need picked up. And we're going to have a log of daily activity, which will be kept and filed with the judge in case Commissioner's Court wants to look at it, review it, or whatever. And we're going to be working strictly with a warrant that if signed, it been processed through the court. And of course, there's some other little things, like, we were not going to be accepting if the, he goes out, and say, he goes out to a job site, and he can, maybe he's got cash, we will not be accepting any cash, it'll have to be a money order, cashier's check.
These will be, I'm looking at the budget, where it has surplus of the Crown Victorias, these will be marked vehicles, right? It'll say warrant officer, and they'll have our county logos and all that stuff.
Yes, sir, it will.
All right. The equipment that's necessary, is that factored into this budget? Are they going to have overhead lights, or interior lights, or?
Yes.
Yes, sir, okay, all right.
It includes everything that's going to be needed for them.
That is correct.
Very good.
And y'all don't have any other questions? I sure do, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Dan?
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it, appreciate y'all being here. Feel like y'all were in church. Everybody at the back, right? All right, thank you. Item twenty-one, discussion and possible action on temporary contract negotiation regarding the performance of autopsies for Cameron County?
Judge and Commissioners, I would like to report that I've had three calls from different individuals other than those that are now doing the work for us that are interested. So there's supposed to be some follow-up emails to me soon, and the direction that this court, and I called the judge because we need to know the commitment that we want to make to developing that office as a county. We know what we're spending now. I know we're talking about having a meeting, and JD has been in Washington, he's been out of town, the county judge from, from Idarigo, but there is a possibility, there's interest shown, and there's individuals that would be willing to do the work for the county if we set up an office. I've requested right now to follow up with the Webb County individual who just set up an office in Webb County, just got hired, who says that they're more than happy if we're in a bind, they help us at any time, they have adequate space, they have a brand-new facility to help the county out, the cost would be probably a lot less than we're paying now on a weekly basis. So there's, there's, there's three different potentials that we're looking at, and hopefully by next week, we'll have a little more information.
Great.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Commissioner Gataza's report?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those signify by, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-two, discussion and possible action regarding the upper payment limit option for the initial healthcare funds. Apparently, they're still in discussions. I got a call from, from a doctor today that, that wants to, I guess, share his thoughts about this program. I asked him to, I was going to give Mark Yates and Yvette Salinas his phone number, so they could contact him and just get a perspective, from the doctor's perspective. So I guess with that, there's nothing to do with this item today, right? Do I hear a motion to table? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-three, consideration approval of scope and fee with Aguirre Corporation for the repairs to the Carisales Rucker Facility.
Judge and Commissioners, last week I had a meeting with Sheriff Lucio, and at the very last page in your packet is the items that are listed individually that need repair. While with the sheriff, we had a conference call with Aguirre Corporation, and we went line item by line item on what's being proposed by Aguirre. The sheriff was in agreement with all the items that were included. The total budget that we have for the contract with Aguirre, the numbers have slightly changed than from what you have there. The total design fee and the construction management fee is nine hundred thousand dollars. The reimbursables are fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one, so the total, the total fee is nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, and that is my recommendation. That would leave a design fee at five point four percent, and the construction management fee at two point two percent, and the total fee being seven point six percent. The timeframe that we've established for the design and for review by the different agencies is about six months, I think we're looking at about a four months. In four months, we should be about ninety-five percent complete schematics and design, and then we'll leave about two months to go to the Commissioner Joe Sanders, you know, additional meetings with Sheriff Lucio and his staff, and so we believe that in six months from now, we can pretty much be ready to, to start bidding out the, the project.
Pete, you may want to mention to the court that we did negotiate this fee down. He did absorb some costs that he'd already incurred, working with the sheriff sometime back. This is also a fixed fee, so if there's any potential change orders up or down, it's a fixed fee, so that's going to be the price that we're going to pay him regardless of, of any change orders we might have during the process, is that correct?
Based on, on what we have, on what the scope is, yes. If we change the scope and we add to the scope, then, then that might be...
No, I'm talking about if we have any change, no, I'm talking about adding the scope.
Right.
I'm talking about the scope.
No, this, this is the fee for the design of, of what we have in the scope, yes.
And the construction administration, and the other two items.
Correct.
Well, I, I think that, you know, the fee might be a little higher than some of us are accustomed to, and but, this project, this project is a lot more complicated than your normal brand-new design project. We've got a project that we're going in there and remediating. The folks that we're looking at approving the fee and scope with have been very helpful to us, and I think they have a good understanding of what needs to happen there. It's harder sometimes to fix something than it is to build it new, so...
Now, that's certainly the case on this one.
I will tell you that they reduced, they, they, they reduced it by forty-six thousand dollars. They reduced their fee based on what they already had in the file, so we're happy about that.
And I'll second that.
Okay. That was moved by Commissioner Gataza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries. Item twenty-four, consideration approval of bank depository agreement between Cameron County and Texas State Bank. Dilvia, that's ready to go?
The main contract is ready to go, there are three attachments, and one of the attachments is a positive pay agreement, and I would like one minor change there.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agreement subject to Dilvia fixing that little thing that she's got to fix?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gataza, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approved? Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-five, consideration action to approve security lighting for the northeast parking lot improvements. Mr. Nahosa? Um, excuse me, Mr. Bedcourt, David, did you have anything to say regarding the contract? Anything to add? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, see y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Judge and County Commissioners. A week ago, the court authorized expenditure for estimate number one in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And, and the direction that was given, it was that if there was not going to be any damage to the existing asphalt, that that was adequate. We went back to P U V, and obviously, they did have a problem proceeding forward with this estimate, since it was going to be open trench, a type of insulation, underground power cable, but, but there's still that area that was under asphalt. They, they did indicate to us that there would be, well, they can do the borings without any damage, but it would require some additional bores and some additional cost. And I just got this estimate as of today, and I apologize for not giving it to you sooner, but in front of you, you should have a copy of the additional cost. And basically, what it says, there's directional bore approximately four hundred and thirty feet to install eight concrete light bulbs. The amount estimated from them is five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, for a total cost of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That would be the, the cost added to the original estimate. At this point, if you all want to consider this, we need to decide so that we can proceed forward with the construction. And, and I know Commissioner Wood entertained the possibility of adding perimeter lights, perhaps, on the outside, and that's still an, an open option, if you all want to consider that, and it'll be something less than the seven thousand dollars, of which was the third estimate.
Less than what?
Less than seven thousand dollars, for the, which was being the estimate number three, and that, that, that just includes some additional pole, power poles, but there'll be wooden poles with some area floodlights on it, very minimal, in other words.
But does that from, but does that provide the security that we need?
It would, but again, if you're all looking for aesthetics, of course, estimate one is the best option, but if, if, if you're still going to have those big poles around that thing, the perimeter there...
Yeah, but you're going to, aren't you going to have, you're talking concrete versus, versus the wood, all right? I mean, what's, do you all really care about the aesthetics, or do you want to save, you know, twenty-one thousand dollars? How you all want to proceed?
There are a lot of wooden poles there now on the perimeter, are you saying they're all going to stay there anyway?
Yes, because the, the ones on the front of the courthouse, they're already providing lighting to the courthouse, it's just a matter of reversing and going to the backside and, and flooding the, the parking lot, but it's not going to be as attractive, it's not going to be, you know, and I don't know what the court wants to, how they want to...
Well, let me ask you, why, how come they can't use the six concrete poles versus the six wood poles? I mean, I'm saying it go up a little bit, but, I mean, if they're going to use six wooden poles on the perimeter, is that estimate number three?
It's probably heavier floodlights, because those lights are one thousand watt lights compared to two hundred and forty...
Yeah, but I'm saying aesthetically, though, why, why would we not want to, why wouldn't they not want to put concrete, the post that Commissioner Wood is recommending to do the, the perimeter poles in concrete versus in wood? I guess that's my question.
It can be done, but, I mean, there's a lot of options that, that can be pursued. The, the first three options that we presented to the court was, was going to be twenty, thirty, twenty-five concrete poles, you know, as, as estimate, and you want, I mean, estimate one indicates. Now, estimate number three is wooden poles, but those wooden poles can be set, I guess, on, on concrete poles, but it'll, it'll probably be a little bit more than seven thousand. I didn't explore that option.
Well, why can't we do estimate three but with concrete poles instead of the six wood poles? I mean, if we're worried about aesthetics, I mean, I don't, okay, but, I mean, did the idea provide, the idea...
That's fine, but the estimate is going to be another estimate.
I understand, but it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot cheaper than the twenty-eight thousand dollars, and it'll be slightly higher than the seventy-one hundred dollars, so it'll probably be closer to thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars.
Definitely.
Can you go back and ask them? I mean, we still have time, right?
Well, we're running out of time, Judge. You know, this, well, the perimeter's not going to be a problem, because they're just going to be, in other words, it, it won't interfere with, with the asphalt or construction, you know, but you just need to...
Can, can we do estimate number three and ask if they can use concrete, if not, just use wooden poles?
Well, we, we can go ahead and make a motion.
All right. So I hear a motion by Commissioner Gataza to do estimate number three and ask them if they can utilize concrete poles?
If not, proceed.
Proceed with, with the wood, wooden poles.
You don't want to put it off any longer.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Gataza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item six, item twenty-six, consideration possible action on increasing the terms for the concessionaires, beach services... on increasing the terms for the concessionaires, beach services, jetties bait stand, and Isla Beach wear.
Judge, Commissioners, we called all the concessionaires that are, that are mentioned here in this agenda, and they all do, would like to consider the, the five-year lease.
All right, do I hear a motion? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Javier, just one thing, I want to, just make sure that all these concession agreements are identical in terms of terms and conditions, and, other than, than the, than the price, but-
Okay.
Okay, all right. Item twenty-seven, consideration and possible action regarding the county's legislative agenda. Do I hear a motion to, to table?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Garsa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor-
Any vetoes yet? No?
No.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Judge, I hope you send that email that I asked.
Oh, any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-eight, discussion and possible action regarding the county's federal agenda. Do I hear a motion to table? Moved by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. God save this honorable court.